Good evening. I call to order the Murray City Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, December 5th, 2024. It is 6:34 PM. Present this evening, we have Commissioners Ned Hacker, Pete Horisto, Michael Richards, Jake Pearson, Michael Henry, Lisa Malkovich, and I am Maryne Patterson. I'm the Chair. From staff, we have Zachary Smallwood, David Rogers, Michael Richardson, and Ruth Ruck. We welcome the public. Thank you for attending our meetings. Some etiquette items to review. We ask that you take a moment and silence your cellphones. And when the time comes to make a comment on the agenda item, we ask that you would come to the microphone for the recording and that you state your name and address for the minutes. Once the item you are here for is over, you are welcome to leave. We just ask that you do so quietly so that we can continue with our remaining agenda items. If you are viewing this meeting online on the livestream, the only way to make a public comment is to email planningcommission@murray.utah.gov. If you post a comment on the Facebook or YouTube livestream, it will not be seen. So we will begin with Agenda Item Number One. Our meeting minutes from October 17th and November 7th. Have all the Commissioners had an opportunity to review the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that the Planning Commission approve the Planning Commission meeting minutes from October 17th, 2024, and November 7th, 2024, as written.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Agenda Item Number Two, Conflicts of Interest. Do any of the Commissioners have a conflict of interest with any of the agenda items this evening?
I do with Item Number Eight, the Flaglot Subdivision.
Okay.
And I would just like to state for the record that I know the applicant for Number Eight. I've known him for a long time. He did also contribute to my campaign when I ran for City Council, but that won't affect my decision on the item.
Any other conflicts of interest?
No.
No? Neither do I. Item Number Three, Approval of Findings of Facts and Conclusions. Have the Commissioners had an opportunity to review the findings of fact and conclusions for a conditional use permit for Crockett Auto Sales, a conditional use permit for Murray Field Townhomes, and a preliminary subdivision for Murray Field Townhomes?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion.
Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the findings of facts for Crockett Auto Sales, Murray Field Townhomes, and Murray Field Townhomes with the adjustment to the wording for the preliminary subdivision of the one we talked about in the pre-meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes. We will begin with our conditional use permit for Lazy Dog Restaurant. Is applicant here this evening? Okay, great. We'll first have a presentation from David Rogers.
Thank you, Commissioners. So this is a site plan review for a new restaurant located in our CD Zone, which is our commercial district, located at 102 East Winchester Street. So as you can see, it is right off of State Street and Winchester Street and the current location of a Macaroni Grill, right north of the I-215 interchange. It is a 9,950 square foot building on a 1.45 acre site. Here's the zoning around the property. The vast majority of the parcels around it are also zoned CD with some residential further to the west. The applicant has provided us with elevations of the building, so you can see what it looks like on the north side, on the west side, on the south side, and the east side. The applicant has proposed a combination of materials, including the use of earth-toned stucco, stone veneer, wood siding, black metal trim, and glass, and staff does not have any concerns with the materials of the building. Provided are the site plan and the floor plan, so you can see how the site itself will be laid out with the parking, along with the floor plan of what the restaurant will look like on the inside. And I tried to make them match as well as possible, the little tilt of the building there, so you can see how it will be laid out. So in regards to parking and access, I have circled the access points to the site in red. You can see that there's an access from Winchester, along with two other accesses to the east that will access the rest of the strip mall that already is existing there. The parking requirement for this restaurant, they're required to have 91 stalls, and they've provided 124 stalls, so staff does not anticipate any issues with access or with parking. The next thing we look at is landscaping, and the applicant provided a landscaping plan, and we have been working and discussing with the applicant about the landscaping required. So the two areas that I have circled in red are the landscaping areas that are required on the frontages, so on both the Winchester Street frontage and the State Street frontage. I've also included a chart that show the number of trees and shrubs that are required in those areas, along with the requirement that 10% of the total site must be landscaped. And including these two frontage areas, along with the landscaping that the applicant has provided, that is sufficient for the coverage that we're looking for, and the applicant has indicated that they are willing to work with the city to install the landscaping prior to operating as the restaurant. And this was provided for the applicant of some kind of the types of trees and shrubs that they intend to use around the site. So six notices were mailed to property owners within a 300-foot radius and to affected entities, and as of the writing of this report, no comments or questions have been received in response. So based on the analysis of the application, the materials submitted, site visits, and a survey of the area, staff concludes that the proposed use is consistent with the goals and objectives of the Murray City General Plan, and with conditions, the proposed plan meet the requirements of the Murray City Land Use Ordinance. So staff recommends that the Planning Commission grant site plan approval for the proposed Lazy Dog Restaurant for the property addressed 102 East Winchester Street, subject to the following conditions. And as we discussed in the pre-meeting, the applicant and the city engineer have had some conversations about some of the city engineering requirements, and so, as we discussed, there is a request that Recommendation One, subsection A, it changes from "meet city storm drain requirements," onsite detention, retention, and water quality treatment is required, or receive a waiver, and the applicant is intending to apply for a waiver after this meeting. And then for subsection E, obtain a city excavation permit for work within city rights of way. We have been asked to add, if required or if needed, to that where that will not be necessary unless the applicant ends up working within the rights of way. But the other recommendations are as stated, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
This says the staff requests that the applicant work with the planning and engineering departments about potentially relocating the sidewalk as part of implementing the landscape.
Yes, so that was something that staff proposed to the applicant, that we'd like to make some pedestrian improvements in this area, but is not a requirement of approval, and the applicant has indicated that they don't have any interest in making changes to the sidewalk, so they'll just be implementing the landscaping without making changes to the sidewalk. And that was never a condition, that was just something that we approached them about.
Any other questions?
One other quick question, I'm sorry. The Power Department conditions or comments, that existing transformer comment, I assume that will just be taken care of as part of the building permit, right? Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. If we could have the applicant come forward.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jared Taylor here on behalf of Lazy Dog Restaurants. We're excited to be before you this evening. Lazy Dog Restaurant is a full-service, sit-down, dine-in restaurant with a sale of a full line of alcoholic beverages for onsite consumption. This is a national chain. We have over 50 locations currently operating throughout the United States. We're developing in multiple regions throughout the United States. This is not a franchisee model. This is a corporately operated store. We hope you may be familiar perhaps with some of our locations around the Denver area. We also have locations in California, Nevada, Texas, the Northeast, Florida, and Chicago areas as well. When we go into a new market, such as here in the Greater Salt Lake City Market, we want to go in with our best foot forward, and we really want to pick the best area, the corner of Main and Main, and that's exactly what we feel through our market research we are proposing with this location here. You know, ideally for a restaurant, it would be to do a tenant improvement and just remodel the existing building, but restaurants over time, they need to be demolished. It just becomes nasty. You've got to tear it down, start fresh, and that's what we're proposing to do here, is really bring forward a beautiful restaurant, great architecture, great landscaping, and really a great operation as well. This is a dog-friendly restaurant. Customers are allowed to bring their family friend's dog onto the outdoor patio in compliance with local health laws. The dog does not enter the interior of the restaurant unless, of course, it's a service dog. The dogs are allowed to be on the patio, you know, maintained by their owners. It's not doggy daycare. You're still responsible for your own pet if you bring your dog to the restaurant. Lazy Dog Restaurant is inspired by Rocky Mountain dining cuisine, and we realize here locally, you probably may have some of that, but we think we'll still bring a great offering to this local market. The owners were really inspired in Jackson Hole, Wyoming, in that with the architecture, the food, the menu, bison meatloaf, among many other American cuisines on the menu. We're excited to be coming before you tonight. We've really enjoyed working with staff. You guys have a fantastically efficient process here in Murray. I think you should be really proud of that, and we look forward to, you know, getting under construction, so happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great, yeah, sounds very exciting. Have you had an opportunity to review the conditions? I see one's double-numbered maybe, with the changes mentioned by staff?
Yes, great question. We're here ready to accept the conditions of approval as proposed, with the modifications as proposed by staff.
Okay, great. So you'll be able to comply with all of those?
Yeah.
Wonderful. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I will now open the meeting for public comment regarding this item. If you would like to make a comment on this agenda item, you may do so by coming to the podium. Please state your name and address into the microphone for the record before your comment, and try to keep your thoughts to three minutes. We ask that you offer new information in your comments, and please do not rehash already stated concerns. After the public comment portion of the meeting, we will address any questions or concerns with the applicant or staff. Is there anyone that would like to make a public comment regarding this agenda item? Have you received any online? Okay. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment period and bring it back for discussion or a motion.
Madam Chair?
Not on. Madam Chair?
Hmm.
Should I pause? Are you good? Okay. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we, the Planning Commission, grant site plan approval for the proposed Lazy Dog Restaurant for the property addressed 102 East Winchester Street, subject to the conditions posted with the modifications discussed.
Okay, is there a second on that motion?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Malkovich and a second by Commissioner Horisto to grant site plan approval for the proposed Lazy Dog Restaurant for the property addressed 102 East Winchester Street, subject to the nine conditions with the changes mentioned to Condition 1A and 1E. Is there any discussion on that motion? Okay, we can take a vote.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Richards?
Yes.
Commissioner Horisto?
Yes.
Commissioner Malkovich?
Yes.
Chair Patterson?
Yes. Motion passes. Good luck with your project. We're excited to have you in Murray. Thank you so much for being here. I know you maybe traveled from far away, so we appreciate you being here tonight. Okay. Agenda Item Number Five, Game Show Battle Rooms. Is applicant here? Okay, great. We'll have a presentation by Ruth Ruck first.
Thank you. So here we have an application for conditional use permit for game show entertainment business at 6148 South State Street, Unit B. Here is the location of the site. It's near Grant Park and the Murray Senior Center. The unit that the proposed business will take is about 8,600 square feet, and it's highlighted in blue. And the subject property is zoned for CD or commercial development, and it's surrounded by other properties zoned for CD as well, and there are some residential areas nearby. Here is the site plan and floor plan provided by the applicant, showing how the unit will change. They've proposed adding two arenas and a training room to host any games and events. And the subject property can be accessed from three access points, which are circled in red, from 6100 South, from State Street, from 6150 South. And for parking, staff calculated that the number of required parking stalls is 37, and staff has no concerns with parking. So 21 notices of this meeting was sent to the public, and as of the date of this meeting, staff has not received any comments. And so for our findings, the proposed use for game show entertainment business is allowed in the CD Zone, subject to conditional use permit approval, and with conditions, the proposed use in property will comply with the standards of Murray City Land Use Ordinance, and the proposed use is not contrary to the goals and objectives of the general plan in this area. And so with that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve a conditional use permit to allow game show entertainment business at this property, subject to these three conditions. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay. No questions for staff? All right, if we could have the applicant come forward.
Hi, good evening. I'm Jennifer Jewitt. Do I need to do my full address?
Yes.
Okay, 3424 East Page Avenue, Gilbert, 85234.
Thank you. And have you had an opportunity to review the conditions?
Yes, I have.
And you'll be able to comply with those?
All of them. Happy to.
Great. Is there any additional information you'd like to give the Commission?
We are just an indoor game show experience where you are going to be on a game show. We're going to bring it, it's going to be great for family events, team builders, where you get to participate like you're on TV. Live action hosts will be a part of the room and the experience, and we're excited to bring some entertainment right across from your busiest mall here in Salt Lake. It's exciting.
Sounds fun.
Yes.
Any questions for the applicant?
I've got one. I noticed you proposed to stay open till 11:00, and this is right next to residential area, correct?
Correct.
So I'm assuming since it's all contained inside, we don't have to worry about noise or that kind of thing, right?
Ah, great question. Everything is contained in the arenas, and soundproofing is installed with very, especially even for our neighbors, so that nothing is, everything isn't contained, there won't be any issues with the neighbors. So, and our last show would start at 10:00, so we'd be leaving at 11:00, so.
Great.
It's a good question.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you, guys.
All right. I will open this agenda item up for public comment regarding this item. Is there anyone that would like to make a public comment? Did you receive any online comments?
I almost had a panic attack, thinking that we got one, but it was actually from Pinterest on my work email, so it was fine.
All right.
So no.
Yes.
All right. Seeing none, I will close the public comment period and bring it back for discussion or a motion.
Madam Chair? Oh.
I'll second it.
Sorry, okay. I'd like to make a motion that we, the Planning Commission, approve a conditional use permit to allow game show entertainment business at the property located at 6148 South State Street, subject to the following conditions, 1 through 3, as posted.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. I have a motion by Commissioner Malkovich and a second by Commissioner Richards, that the Planning Commission approve the conditional use permit to allow a game show entertainment business at the property addressed 6148 South State Street, Unit B, subject to the three conditions. Is there any discussion on that motion? Okay, then we can take a vote.
Did you, I'll do it. Yeah. Commissioner Malkovich?
I have to admit that I like making the motion on items that aren't controversial, and I think the public will love, so yes.
Yeah. Commissioner Richards?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Horisto?
Yes.
And Chair Patterson.
Yes. Motion passes. Welcome to Murray. We're excited to come to your business.
We're glad to have you.
Thank you. Okay. Agenda Item Number Six and Seven will be presented together. Preliminary subdivision review and planned unit development for Villages on Vine. Is applicant present? Yes. Okay, first we'll have a presentation from staff.
Perfect, yeah. So this is a request from Brad Reynolds Construction for the Villages on Vine. It's a 55-unit townhome development. It was on the old location of the Wagon Master and, most recently, Dead City. You'll remember, I think it was last year, the building burned down and has been vacant ever since. It's right across the street from the Murray Cemetery. Also earlier this year, they rezoned the property to, sorry, they, the city, rezoned the property to RM20 to allow residential development in this area. Here is the preliminary plat. You can see this is Vine Street over here on your left-hand side. They will have singular access drive with a cul-de-sac for fire turnaround. We did verify that all the, excuse me, all these access lanes do meet fire code and everything like that. Here's the landscaping plan, showing the layout. Yeah, we're pretty happy with this. I'll get into the funner pictures. So five-plex rear-load elevations, these all will have rooftop elements, rooftop, oh my gosh, decks, patios, thank you. Man, I can't come up with words. Five-plex front-load elevations, so they obviously have front doors facing the garages here. Then I'll get into the pretty pictures. So here is the five-plex front-loaded, and then also Vine Street. I call dibs on this house right here, and this one's mine. You can see me walking into it right there, so that's me. And...
The price just went up.
I'm sorry?
The price just went up.
Yeah, probably. That's fine. That's fine. This is Vine Street looking east, and then here we have looking northeast, so this would be McRiley over on this side. And then, yeah, here is an aerial looking southeast, looking west. So this would be the apartment complex currently, this would be the cemetery along here, the Vine Street facing five-plex, and then also the Vine Street three-plex. And then because I really like it, I showed the Vine Street three-plex again. So we sent out 58 notices of the public meeting, sent to affected entities and all property owners within 450 feet. We did receive one email, which I will read into the record, in opposition to the proposed development. The findings, we do find that with conditions, the proposed subdivision complies with the standards of the Murray City Land Use Ordinance and the subdivision ordinance, excuse me, and it's in harmony with the RM20 zone, representing appropriate residential development. The proposed subdivision is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the Murray City General Plan. So with that, we are recommending that the Planning Commission, I didn't update the recommendation, I apologize, I did this in a hurry, grant preliminary subdivision approval and approve the planned unit development. So you'll have to read it off your staff report, I apologize. I did put the conditions in there correctly, I just didn't put in this section right, I apologize. But we do recommend that you approve those, subject to those nine conditions.
That sounded weird.
Yeah, so Planning Commission approved the planned unit development and grant preliminary subdivision approval for the Villages on Vine. Thank you. Any questions?
I asked about this earlier, would you just comment about the proposed setbacks?
Yeah, so in the planned unit development ordinance, it does allow for variation in setbacks. They are proposing 24 feet along the front and rear here, and then the sides are eight and 12, or 10 and 10, whatever equals 20. They do meet the sides currently, so really the only one you're really looking at is the 24 front and rear?
So it's only a one-foot?
About a one-foot reduction, yeah.
Any other questions for staff? No?
I have a very important question for the applicant, but I'm away.
Okay. Okay, then if we could have the applicant come forward.
Brad Reynolds, 2500 East Haven Lane, Salt Lake, Utah. We're very excited with our new proposed project. We've had various projects in Murray that have all been very successful and have sold out at a record pace, and we anticipate that this will be one of those projects. We've tried to go out of our way to have like five different unit types, so it'll be very appealing to a lot of different groups, and we've already sold one, it looks like, so we're thrilled about that. But we are trying to put a lot of quality into these units. They'll have all quartz countertops, two-tone paint, every one has a two-car garage, we have excess parking in the community, and we're trying to come in and make these sellable units, and we're hoping in that location that it will appeal to a lot of different groups. We're trying to think if there's anything else, like I mentioned, they're all two-car garages, and we're excited with having this project move forward. Any questions that I might be able to answer?
Have you had an opportunity to review the nine conditions?
I have, and we're fine to comply with those.
You'll be able to comply with those, great. Any further questions for...
I have a question. Mr. Reynolds, you've done several projects that have been great in Murray, we appreciate that. I feel like you kind of know Murray a little bit. You looked here, and you're suggesting that one of your streets is Wagon View Lane. I think that's kind of a nod to the past, so where's our Dead City Didn't Fly? So maybe Burnt Way, Hot Shot Avenue?
No, we should have taken that into consideration, right? That is great, yes.
That's all I have.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. I would like to open this agenda item for public comment. If there's anyone that would like to come and speak to this agenda item, we ask that you state your name and address for the record.
I'm Max Reece, Secretary of the Little Cotton with Tanner Ditch Company, 977 East, 5600 South, Murray, Utah, 84121. The irrigation, one of our irrigation ditches goes on the, if you bring up the plat plan, we could point that out. It's on the east side, about 70 feet off of the property line, and it crosses across, the water's running from south to north, and I wonder if that's identified on there? I don't see it.
That's where I'm moving my...
Oh, that's it, right there.
The laser pointer right through there, yeah, it's being maintained.
Okay. Well, that's good. Is there any sort of, right now, that's a concrete pipe, it looks like it's 36 inches. There's one box on the, one box on the south side, the south end, or, but is it 200 feet width-wise? What is the, what's the distance on that?
I would have to double-check. Let me see if I can...
There should be, if it's more than 200 feet, there should be another box for that irrigation ditch.
Yeah, and it would most likely be addressed on the utility plan, which would be reviewed by our city engineer.
Okay. The ditch is, the pipe is fairly deep. The collar on the one box that you can look at has been damaged on the pipe. It has kind of a tile fix on it, which could be, if anything's disturbed in that area, it could break loose. So that's kind of the story there, so we'll have to make sure that that is either maintained or replaced, or whatever Brad Reynolds wants to do to get that through. I mean, if you're putting heavy equipment across that, it might be a problem. It's probably not reinforced concrete, so, and it's under a road, so you might want to consider that. So we'd like to be part of this process to make sure that that ditch is maintained through there. If there's work that's going to be done, we're running water in it now, it takes us, since that distance, it takes us a couple of days for it to drain out, if there's going to be work on it, in the winter. In the summer, it's really hard to turn off because tail... In the winter, in the summer, it's really hard to turn off, because tailwater from two of our other ditches go into it. So if there's going to be work done on it, it should be done before April this year, if it's going to be work done, or else it's going to be harder for us to turn off. Do you have any, any questions for me?
For the, for the Planning Commission's, and for you to know as well, the city engineer does call out on, can, on letter I of his review, it says obtain irrigation company approval for pipe relocation and drainage connection, so that is addressed. So Mr. Reynolds would be working with you guys on that.
Okay, that's why I'm here. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Do you want to read yours?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and read the emailed comment. It is from Brandy Grace at Chief Executive Officer for Utah Association of Counties, 5397 South Vine Street, Murray, Utah. Dear Murray City Planning Commission, I am writing on behalf of Utah Association of Counties, located at 5397 South Vine Street, to express our concerns regarding the proposed housing development near our office building. While we recognize the need for more housing in our community, this project raises several critical issues that we believe could negatively impact the surrounding area. One, increased traffic congestion, the roads surrounding our office building are already congested, particularly during peak hours, adding a significant number of residential units would exacerbate this issue, leading to increased commute time, safety hazards, and potential bottlenecks in case of emergencies. We already routinely experience people driving through our parking lots as a pathway to avoid the stoplight at the corner. Number two, insufficient infrastructure, the current infrastructure, including roads, parking, and public transit, is not equipped to handle the increased demand this development would bring. Without significant upgrades, the strain on local amenities and services will diminish the quality of life for both residents and businesses. Number three, impact on local businesses, the increased density could limit parking availability for our employees and clients, making it less convenient for them to access our office and other nearby businesses. This is a problem that already exists. Currently, our parking lot is regularly used by others, this is not a significant problem on days when only our employees are at our office building, but on days when we hold meetings for our clients, this is very problematic. Number four, alternative locations and solutions, we encourage the consideration of alternative locations for this development or a scaled-down version of the project to mitigate the impact on the immediate area. We urge you to take these concerns into account during your review process. Our goal is to foster a balanced approach that supports community growth without compromising the safety, efficiency, and well-being of the existing community. Thank you for your attention to this matter, we would welcome the opportunity to discuss our concerns further and collaborate on finding a solution. Sincerely, Brandy Grace.
Mr. Smallwood, I apologize, I missed one little thing, her second concern on infrastructure, she said roads, and what with others, that she had concerns about with infrastructure?
Parking and public transit.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no further comments, I will close the public comment section and bring you back to maybe answer.
Yeah, I'd be happy to answer it. So I believe, I apologize, I don't know if it's here or here, one of the two, yeah, I think it might be this one. So regarding the irrigation company, I think we've addressed that concern, it is addressed in the engineers, but specifically the one from the Association of Counties, the traffic congestion, we don't require a traffic impact study on anything less than a hundred units in multifamily zones, so this wouldn't have required it at fifty-five. Regarding the infrastructure, I don't think there's a concern there, we, the roads are well-suited for the capacity that this would bring. Parking, they, Mr. Reynolds does have an increase, or an excess of parking on this development, and then also, public transit, that's outside of our purview, that's completely run by the Utah, UTA, Utah Transit Authority. I would love to see more, more transit along this area, but that's not up to us to decide. Impact on local businesses, I would actually say that this would be a good addition to foster for additional patronage of businesses in this area. Specifically, I can think of a prospective person that might buy one of these townhomes that would love to walk to Macy's and get their groceries every day. I don't know about anybody else, but I think it actually would go really well in this area. They also have a very large open space filled with, with, I'm not going to be macabre, never mind, it's a large open space, and it's not really having an impact on the, on the area writ large. Yeah, are there questions regarding the comment that I can answer?
I mean, I guess I feel a little motivated, because I always want to acknowledge the public traffic, I don't know, I feel like traffic's a kind of a little bit the bane of our existence.
Traffic is going to be the bane of anything, I mean, it's, you're in the middle of the county, in the most populated county in this, in the state.
And all growth demands increase in traffic.
Yeah.
And no one's comfortable with any level of increase. I mean, I don't ever, always when we say it meets within our standards, no one's happy with that statement.
Yeah.
I just want to acknowledge that, I know, but I think compared to other possibilities and other growth that's occurring, it's a smaller impact, I know that doesn't make me feel better, but yeah.
They didn't, yeah.
Could you put the, that colored plot?
Chair, do we close the public comment period?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. I'll close the public comment portion.
I think you do.
Thanks, Jay.
I assume on these that have a driveway into the garage, that driveway's long enough for a vehicle, so it's off of the road?
Correct.
Good.
Do you know how many units are in the development to the south by chance?
Oh geez, no.
But a lot more than are going in here.
Susan might.
For what? I just, I just want to point out that there's a big development to the south, and I've visited people in there, and the traffic coming and going out of that development is not a crazy amount, this won't add a crazy amount of traffic.
Yeah, I would say, and the reason why I said Susan might know is because I think she wrote the staff report for the zone change, and actually cited that, that the development to the south is actually operating at a higher density than what this would be operating at. I just don't remember it off the top of my head.
If, could we have the applicant come forward? So I know it cited in the conditions to work with the irrigation company, were you already aware of some of the concerns he brought up, or have you been in contact with Tanner Ditch Company?
We've been mostly in contact with Brown Ditch Company, because that line actually gets, we've got to move it a little bit, and then it, it's more affected than what his line is, but we'll certainly make sure we talk to him and that we're not doing anything to disrupt that line.
Okay, yeah, it sounds like even maybe before you start working, he had some concerns.
For sure, we'll definitely do that.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion, or ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion. Make a motion that the Planning Commission approve the planned unit development and grant preliminary subdivision approval for the villages on Vine on the properties addressed 5425 South Vine Street, subject to the nine conditions listed.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Richards and a second by Commissioner Henry to approve the planned unit development and grant preliminary subdivision approval for the villages on Vine on the properties addressed 5425 South Vine Street, subject to the nine conditions. Is there any discussion on that motion? Okay, we can call for a vote.
Okay, Commissioner Richards.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Horstow?
Yes.
Commissioner Milkovich?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
And Chair Patterson.
Yes. Motion passes, good luck with your project, excited for next steps. Okay, agenda item number eight, Commissioner Henry is going to excuse himself before we get our presentation. Is the applicant here? I see him. All right, first we'll have presentation from David Rogers.
Thank you, Commissioners, so this is preliminary and final subdivision approval for two flag lots located at 5991 and 6001 South Bellevue Avenue. So it is a point seven-nine acre site, you can see the two parcels have been highlighted there in blue. These parcels were recently rezoned from R-18 to R-16 in anticipation of this future flag lot, and all of the other surrounding parcels are R-18 with some general office further to the west. Let me try to zoom in on that a little bit. So this is the preliminary plat, this shows how the two existing parcels will be split into four parcels, with the back two being the flag lot subdivision. This shows the, maybe, there we go, this shows the drive access here that will allow access back to lots nine B and ten B, while still providing adequate access for lots nine A and ten A. Our flag lot provision indicates that lots that are the flag lots have to be a certain size larger than the underlying zone, so because this is an R-16, the minimum lot size of the front lots needs to be six thousand square feet, while the minimum size of the rear lots needs to be seven thousand five hundred square feet, and all four lots exceed the minimum requirements, and the drive access is also adequate to provide access to all of those lots. So forty-eight notices of this public meeting were sent to affected entities and all property owners for parcels located within three hundred feet of the subject property. As of the time of this presentation, staff has not received any comments in response. Based on the analysis of the application, the materials provided and a survey of the surrounding area, staff concludes the following. The proposed flag lot subdivision meets the requirements of Section seventeen dot nine six of the Murray City Land Use Ordinance, the proposed flag lot subdivision meets the requirements of applicable titles of, sections of Title sixteen, which is the subdivision ordinance, Section seventeen dot seven six dot one four zero, which is about flag lots, allows flag lots under subdivision, allows flag lot subdivisions under conditions which are present in this application, the proposed subdivision adheres to the specific requirements for flag lot subdivisions, and the proposed subdivision allows for a more efficient use of land, which furthers the goal of the Murray City General Plan regarding stabilization of residential areas and providing increased housing options. So based on all of that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission grant preliminary and final subdivision approval for a flag lot subdivision for the proposed Murray-Burton Acres subdivision located at 5991 and 6001 South Bellevue Avenue, subject to the following ten conditions, and I'm happy to take any questions.
I do have a question, if, can you go back to the, the map, I can't think of the name, but, yeah, yeah, yeah. So if we took that and divided it in half, top and bottom, would both those qualify for, to be flag lots? Like if I was just doing the top two or the bottom two?
Yes, I'm confused.
If I took out lot ten A, ten B, and we were just looking at nine A and nine B, and this application was just for nine A and nine B, would everything be correct that that could be applied for a flag lot?
There wouldn't, the spacing for the driveway would affect it, right?
Yeah, so, yeah, so if they're doing, sorry, I'm, sorry, I don't mean to take over, if, if, it would be a little trickier, so the R-16 does require sixty feet, a sixty-foot wide lot, lot width, looks like it's about seventy-two, but then also, it would have to have a twenty-eight foot access drive to that flag, to the, to the back lot, to the nine B, so I don't think, it looks like it's nineteen and nineteen, so minus seven off that, I can't do math in my head, so, yeah, so, might be there.
So, so I guess my question is, I think I read in the code that two adjoining flag lots can share the same road.
Correct.
So is this two flag lots, or is this one flag lot?
It's two flag lots, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, because right now it's just like nine A and ten A currently exist.
Okay, so the application would be technically to do two flag lots?
Correct, but, yeah, but because it's one subdivision, it's one subdivision application.
Just one application, okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, then I will open the meeting for public comment regarding this agenda item. Oh, sorry, no, we're not there yet. If we could have the applicant come forward, sorry, I'm skipping ahead.
Lower the podium, there we go.
That microphone is adjustable, I think, if you need to adjust it.
There we go.
Perfect. And could you state your name and address for the record?
I'm Paul Dodge, 5969 South 450 East in Murray.
Great. Have you had an opportunity to review the ten conditions?
Many, yes, it's been read over and over.
Yes, okay, great, and you'll be able to comply with those?
Yes, we will.
Okay, great. Is there any additional information you'd like to give the commission?
Pardon?
Is there any additional information you want to give the commission about this project?
No, we're excited to see it turn into houses that we hope families will occupy and make our neighborhood a little more vibrant.
Great. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you so much. Okay, now I would like to open this agenda item up for a public comment, if there's anyone that would like to come to the podium and make a comment regarding this agenda item? No? Do we receive any online? Okay, seeing no comments, I'll close the public comment period and bring it back for discussion or a motion.
Can I just say, everything we've done in this neighborhood, I don't think we've ever seen.
I'm really surprised that there's no.
One comment.
Public comment, yeah.
From this neighborhood.
Because it's such a good project.
I would hope so, I think that does go a long way, there wasn't a single, not a single email, not a single phone call, anyway, sorry, I don't mean to belabor it, it just is really impressive.
Surprising, based on when they were changing the zoning, there were quite a few comments, so now that there's a proposal, I'm surprised.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that Planning Commission grant preliminary and final subdivision approval for a flag lot subdivision for the proposed Murray-Burton Acres subdivision located at 5991 and 6001 Bellevue Avenue, subject to the conditions one through ten.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Hacker and a second by Commissioner Richards to grant preliminary and final subdivision approval for the flag lot subdivision for the proposed Murray-Burton Acres subdivision located at 5991 and 6001 Bellevue Ave, subject to the ten conditions. Is there any discussion on that motion? All right, we can call for a vote.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Richards?
Yes.
Commissioner Horstow?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Milkovich?
Yes.
Chair Patterson.
Yes. Motion passes, good luck with your project, congratulations. Okay, is there any additional information?
I'd like to applaud how quickly we went through everything.
I really, I really thought tonight's meeting was going to be much.
I know.
Much longer.
We do anticipate having about the same amount of items on the nineteenth, so let me know as soon as possible if you're not able to make it. I know it's getting close to the holiday, but we do have a few things, so, they're easy, not nearly as complicated, I think. Oh, yes, I, we found out in city council that.
Santa Claus?
Santa Claus is going to be here.
Right.
Literally.
For us or for?
Is it for the?
Outside.
Like the real one?
Yeah, like the real Santa Claus will be here.
Bring Edna?
I don't know, bring whatever you want.
I have to say, that's perfect, because another family and I, yesterday, we're trying to figure out when our kids will go to see Santa.
They can do, come to our meeting.
Come to the meeting.
Both.